Hey Jack, do you have your paper on you today?
Say again.
Do you have your your ambulance thing on? You can hear calls and stuff. You're far away to. It was a big accident over in Peterborough. Seven ambulances were called uh this morning by the high school. Yeah. And my my wife got the call this morning said give me to head over. So it had to be students involved and this is coming off. Uh the students that were coming back from the rear center in New Ipswich that went off the road and one student died and the other one was sent to law school and the other one. Listen to Austin didn't let go. Let him sit home. And then that weekend, they had, within a twenty-four hour period, they had three, two former students, but. No, they did, but but not that, not that weekend. But they had two individual side in in car accidents. It was like. It's crazy. You have two former students. And then then they had the kids that were coming down the center and off the road. And that was a crazy scene too, because they had the, the mom comes to pick up the child, you know. And they have to hold them until the police get there so the police can tell them.
Did we send an ambulance or two?
I'm not, I'm not aware if we did or not, but um. Well, I'll I'll ask Chief in a little bit why we're doing this if we did.
Yeah.
I'm at my just text my wife to see what what really went on this morning.
I imagine, I imagine that, I imagine that Davis could get the mutual aid. Uh on his um. Device, cuz it's on the web, so you should be able to listen to dispatch. It was, it was, it was a little while ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and she she had to be flying out to do around seven thirty this morning. So, um. What are we recording? Okay, Commissioner's meeting Wednesday, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. All commissioners are present, um as always, public comments, ding 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 ding. Already. Moving on to elected officials and department head updates. I know Cheryl just listened in today because she has a million things that she's doing right now. Suzanne's gonna be joining us in a second on the agenda item, um and Doug, do you have anything?
Just to set the stage for graduation. Ten or probably a little after. You're either gonna be done. I'm gonna interrupt you, but we have outside guests.
I figured we'd be done.
We'll go down to the room. You and the two commissioners will get a seat up front. Bring in the graduates, I'll say a few words and remarks. I'll offer the opportunity for you to speak.
Well, I think what there's a little change in in the thing is Bob has to be, Bob has to be, uh he he heard his hand, so he has an employment, I guess. So Cherry's aware of that and Terry will come up with some.
Well, actually, to be fair, they bring it on last. I apologize for having what happened to you.
Okay, uh.
Holy crap.
I in fact had a dip between some tractors.
Oh, okay. You told me.
Yes, right. And uh and and the injection was done yesterday and it has to be manipulated this morning, which. Which well, think of it, think of being ten o'clock at ten thirty when it would be exceedingly painful. Then I have to, we have to be fit with this blend for nighttime use and perhaps daytime use for a few days. For two and a half months.
Oh, is that? Well, I was thinking about having one done, but it's not.
See what happens when you get old.
So start to finish to be about thirty minutes. If you do have any business. Just take your thirty minutes. And I'll be impressed.
I'm 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 gonna bet.
He's on a mission today.
I I think we're gonna roll that out.
Well, why don't we get rolling and then we can be sure we'll be done.
Yes, sir.
And you have any more stories, Bob?
That's all I have.
Yeah. Scheduled items, uh master agenda item number one, two, one, one, eight, Department of Safety grant acceptance. Suzanne Vanson's here to act and expect their votes accept the grant uh agreement from the Hampton Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant Program Award. For four thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars for purchase, purchasing. At uh SWAT slash FOU battle dress uniforms for the Mananok Special Response Team. Suzanne.
Good morning. This event is for the Mananok Special Response Team. You have accepted a few grants for them before. If you need a refresher on who they are and what they do, let me know.
I I'm good.
Good. Okay. This is for special uniforms for them to wear that are. Like fireproof and waterproof, things like that. It's small, it's forty-seven, forty-seven. It's an allocation through a formula made at the. Uh State Department of Safety level. I'm looking for your acceptance and uh and for a vote to let Chris Coats. Uh uh sign and accept the agreement.
So move. Okay, Jack, you want a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions, thoughts or discussion? For the record.
I hope Terry doesn't need that sort of help.
These are just closed, Terry.
Commissioner Wosneck.
Hi.
Commissioner England.
Hi.
Commissioner Clark.
Very good. Thank you. Uh Chris, I have the contract ready for you to sign when you are available. And Kim, when the certificate of vote vote makes its way back here, I will uh visit you for, oh wait, are you at the meeting?
I'm at the meeting.
Oh, would you mind not arising what Terry just signed?
I don't have my stamp here. I'll have to do it back at the office.
No worries. I will bring it on back. We can do it there. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a productive meeting.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Bye-bye.
Master agenda item number one, two, one, nine, Human Resource Sydney in report. Ken May is here. Action expected, receive informational report on HR's activity for the preceding six months.
So I'll keep it quick. We hired some people and we lost some people.
Are are we still, are we still uh fully staffed in EMS?
We, I'm sorry, say that again, Jack?
Are we still fully staffed in EMS?
We actually have some interviews this week and next week um to fill the last couple of empty slots that we have. But we are in in really good shape at EMS. We're in really good shape at the Department of Corrections. Um it's essentially the nursing home and um. Connected families needs a a handful of people, most especially in the Claremont area. Um but yeah, we're, I don't wanna say anything too loud, but. Um in the six months from April first to the end of September. Um there were a total of seventy hires across the county. And in that same time period, there were sixty-nine terminations, not involuntary, but. So we're one up in the six month period. Just a couple of um. Notes, we are um again recruiting heavily for care coordinators for connected families and um the nursing home. Um we are um ongoing negotiations with the Teamsters. Hopefully we'll have our contract with them very soon. I'm fully staffed at the nursing at um, I'm sorry, at the DOC. Um we are at the nursing home preparing for the new RN staffing regulations that are expected to come down. Using an existing program that we have, which is school hours equals work hours. Um to allow and encourage LPNs and LNS to go to RN school. Um so that's kind of where we're at. We actually just hired a full-time OT at Maplewood. Um we are in the process of interviewing and negotiating with a speech therapist, which would leave us with one opening for a PT. Um everything else up there is essentially LNS and nurses.
Do you see any difference in the turnover rate anywhere? Either up or down in uh by department? In other words, are some more more stable now than per se a couple of years ago?
I think the Department of Corrections is certainly more stable, um both in corrections officers and in the nursing department. Um I think um EMS is leveling out a little bit because we're getting the folks that we need instead of. Instead of just putting butts in the seats, we're. Able to be more selective at this point. Um the nursing home, the turnover at the nursing home, the nurses are okay. It's the LNS and the ward aides that that come and go. Um. It is some of them discover that the work is just not for them. Um a big one we've had in the last six months is the travel. Um although they come up there for the interview, so they know where they're coming, but then. Um it comes down to travel and them not wanting to um make that drive every day. Um. We've had some issues around rate of pay with LNS, um not huge, but. You know, we've lost some of our LNS to Dartmouth. We know we're never gonna be able to compete with the big guys. Um we always hope that our benefits with Dartmouth up at left. Um they're starting their even brand-new LNS at twenty-five dollars an hour. Um and we're not close to that and.
You mean at the medical center?
Yeah, at up at the big glass house.
Yeah, and it's it's also an entirely different job in.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, and and so. Yeah, if 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 if, I mean, nursing homework is is a gruel for for an LNA and. The population is kind of the same up at at the medical center as it is in most hospitals, but. The the intensity is different, so.
Yeah, and I think the the nursing homework is not. It's rewarding, but it's not exciting, and the younger. Staff that are coming in wants something a little more exciting, and that goes for nurses and LNS. They. You know, I and I I understand that. Um it takes a certain kind of personality to wanna work in long-term care for any period of time. Um where.
Are we, are we comparable to Sullivan County?
Yes.
Because. If I remember right, majority of people that were hiring for the nursing home, that's the biggest level. When I look at the stuff that you send me and that I see on a semi-weekly basis of people that have like left. For whatever reason. Um. And it's it's a lot, it's always interesting when you give me a monthly overview because it's not always about money.
It's not.
And but. When it's the nursing home, we have a lot of people we hire from Springfield, Vermont, Rattlerboro, Claremont. On that. And so we're in competition with Dartmouth, but we're also in competition with Sullivan. And if the atmosphere is 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 great where we're working and the and the building is nice. And the pay is competitive, the plans, the benefits are all there, then yeah, at least we're out of that. But you are right, and Jack's right too. What they do up up at Dartmouth is 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 significantly different than what we do here.
Absolutely.
And I don't know how much more exciting it is. It's it's it's.
Maybe exciting's not the right word. It's challenge, it's more, it's more. Something different every day because when you work on the floor in the hospital. Your patients are different on a regular basis, whereas. I think I would appreciate getting to know my my residents and building that relationship and and feeling like part of a family. Versus somebody new every three or four days or every week, but it depends on what. Yeah, I mean, it just depends on what you're looking for and. Um. No, I mean, we have, we've, we're, we're actively hiring people. We actually have re-instituted our LNA one program. Where we are bringing people in at a lower um scope um and allowing them to determine. It's it's younger um people and people that might be in nursing school, so it allows them to have a more flexible schedule. Um and we've actually had a couple of people come in through that program. Um.
How much training is necessary for someone to be trained as an LNA and can they be trained on site?
They are. We do LNA classes right at Maplewood. It's a six-week program. Um and then we usually want them in orientation on the floor with a mentor, depending on their. How quickly they learn, um another couple of weeks on the floor.
You mean daily?
Yes, that's, we use our school hours equals work hours. We actually pay for the LNA class for them. Um in exchange for a commitment that they'll work for us for at least a year afterwards. At least the first six months of that shift, uh that commitment on an off shift, which is where we need the most help. Um. And we've put quite a few people through an LNA class.
And their requirement for that is presumably a high school graduation.
Or a high set. Or that that we used to call it um GED, now it's called a high set. Um.
What does that say from high school?
High school equivalencies. Yeah, it's a GED. Um and they have to be at least eighteen years old to be an LNA two because they can't operate any of the mechanical lifts. Um if they're under eighteen years old, but that's where we use the LNA one because we have some high school students that have graduated a little prior to their. Eighteenth birthday that have the LNA. We just can't allow them to do certain things until they hit that eighteen-year-old mark. But yes, we partner with LNA Health Careers. We have for several years. Um and um they Caitlin Egan, one of our nurses, is an LNA instructor. Um and um. We do a lot of classes.
You know, the whole patient population has changed so much over the decades. And that makes it a profoundly more difficult job, the the tripling of dementia and the. Dramatic increase in the acuity of the residents. It's simply a lot of physical and mental work and a lot of people to keep track of. I mean, when I first got my. Administrator's license back in nineteen eighty, I mean, we had a lot of. Independent folks and Christ, I'd be having pizza parties and wine parties in my office with the residents. Because they were interactive and they were that way, but.
Yeah.
It's just a whole different population, um.
Yeah, yeah.
Graphics.
Yeah, the acuity has changed significantly of the.
Significantly.
Yeah.
Great story, our guest Brandon, um. His mother is about ninety, was it Langdon Place, and not to disparage them, but there was a. And his issues, they were able to get her over to Maplewood. She has dementia. About three weeks ago and we were. On the other night, just below and. After the presence quality, their connection already with her. Keeping in touch with him as son. Just so happy about the experience at Maplewood.
Did, does your friends already have somebody at Maplewood?
These two people?
Yeah, okay. Well, it's just interesting cuz I, when my mother-in-law was at Langdon recently, when she fell and had to recover from a hip surgery. She was in a room next to a woman whose family was trying to get them up to Maplewood. Because they had. It was the woman that was in there was the mother-in-law. And she's like, my mother is Maplewood native. We were trying to get there up there and. And just right up there and none of that, so yeah.
You you know, at the at the end of the day, I suppose this is probably more for Claudia's purposes than than you guys, but. Maplewood's care will always, always, always be better because it is subsidized by the taxpayers and we don't sacrifice. Staffing or services or resources. Uh because of the profit motive and. That's always been the big difference. There was a time though, when with the patient mix and finances, it was easier for the private nursing homes. To have the same level of care and they obviously have the same level of regulation. Um but um Maplewood's care will always be superior. In a profoundly difficult environment because of the willingness of the taxpayers to support it. To 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 maintain that level of care without regard to reimbursement rates and finances.
And and Jack, the uh, the the acuity again plays into all this too because. Back in the day where you said that they could come in and they could socialize with you because they're at a high level of function. You know, that meant that staff could be doing different things. One. Two is the regulations that require the nursing staff to be off the floor, fill off the paperwork that. The Center for Medicaid Services is requesting of them is another thing that's just only increased over time. And so, yeah, we we've been able to maintain that level. I have a friend that works at one of. The nursing homes in the region. She's a LPN. And she'll be left on the floor with one other um aide and about uh forty residents. And it's it's if your acuity level is where they need, they need more attention. You know, back in the day, they may come out and see you just to talk to you and stuff like that, or if they had a question about something. Now is they're in their best. They're they're not able to move forward and. People may say, what's the ratio? If it's a six to one ratio or something like. You know, well, that's, you know, but that's what you need. That's what you need. These people have the right to have the best level of care. And have their dignity supported at the same time.
That's one of the things that we do here from people that come to us from other facilities is that our staffing ratios, and we know this. It goes back to what Jack was saying. Our staffing ratios are the best anywhere in this area. Um we had a young lady that we hired from one of the for-profit facility, the team. Uh on a three to eleven shift and she was one of two LNS responsible for thirty-five residents on a three to eleven shift. Um and she could not believe that she came to us and was on the floor with five other LNS on the same shift. Um I cannot imagine. Two LNS for thirty-five residents on a three to eleven shift when you're trying to get folks up from naps and get them ready for dinner and then get them ready for bed. And do nighttime snack and do PM care. Uh it's, that's not even safe.
And that's like three times the patient ratio that uh is difficult. Even at a one to ten or one to twelve ratio, so. It's it's almost um a setup for failure. And um.
Oh, a hundred percent.
But but you know, that's, you know. You have to blame reimbursement rates and and regulation and it's a problem. Um it's it's just impossible. It's almost like uh the government's out to to crush. Long-term care um based on, you know, the policies and the reimbursement rates. They know. That the reimbursement rates are less than half of what it actually costs. And um it's it's not sustainable.
Well, not, and and here's the crazy thing is that um because of reimbursement reasons and other issues. You know, just like EMS services across the state of New Hampshire. Nursing homes have been and are at that tipping point of collapses uh on the private side. Because you can't, it used to be that you wanted to get in this level of business cuz there was. There was money to be made and Genesis is selling off their their buildings right and left because they just aren't seeing the profit margins anymore.
And we're not getting many solicitations to buy Maplewood.
Or I just don't bring it to you.
What do you mean, some of those good deals?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Any event, moving on.
Alrighty, that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nine oh one, ten o'clock, uh. And his last words. Um just wanna make you guys aware that the, I was up at the Red Barn site. You know, that we're renovating the Red Barn up there to make it into. A agricultural education center for the Antioch and. The uh con uh Church County Conservation uh Commission and uh um. Well, um teen high schools, church prayers center and Paul Mountain and others can utilize that and then utilize. Our seven hundred and forty-nine acres to real do hands-on is coming along incredibly uh. Extremely good. They already have the back of the house siding done. Uh windows are uh they're not in, but they have arrived and they'll be putting those in. Uh they hope by the end of the day today that they have all sides of the. Of the building sided, so.
So there was really no structural work.
Oh, they've already done that too. They they got it. They took down that side building that needed to be taken down. They did some silver work that needed to be, and they've done a lot of that work already, yeah. They they, the new roof is on. That roof was not in a great shape at all. And they've taken care of any rot that they needed to take care of um. So, I mean, all the all the all the, the whole thing is. You know, they they. It's all new site. It's all new, you know, wood siding stuff. And it's painted, on the backside, painted red looks nice. So um. And and uh on a on a side note, what's interesting is, you know, we turned down the USDA. Um monies that they gave us because they're asking us to jump through so many hoops that. We're actually spending more of the money than we would be using towards the building with all the studies they are asking us to do. We said, forget it, we don't want it. Well, we get, I got contacted this week and they said, you know, we talked to the people um at the. Um hi, the higher-ups and they asked, they asked us to take a look at um us um. Changing what we asked for and they're and just if there's internal. Uh fixtures. That we could be buying if there's, they outlined a whole bunch of things, so we set up a meeting for Monday. Actually nail down what they mean by that.
Fixtures.
Bathrooms, toilets, splits, all this stuff so that we could actually use more money on. The building and continue to develop that and then use this to. Yeah, we might be able to add more more stuff in that we weren't talking about that because uh we can use it for all the fixtures and we don't know. We wanna know exactly, I, maybe I will push the limit on anything we can do. So I wanna know how far I can push it. Yeah. Yeah, and that's what I think too. So, you know, they said tables, chairs, you know, all this stuff. And I'm like, well, if that's all, and and they're saying it's pretty, there's no match. There's, you know, it's just straight here, here, and we can do this, so it's like, wow, alright.
Can we get some progress pictures? I know we haven't seen the site, or at least I haven't.
Yeah, um yeah, Curtis was, Curtis was at my house last night, so. Um I asked him to send me the pictures that he's had so far, but it looked really good. He also said the doors are on. Tell Jack the doors are good.
When we meet.
At Hinsdale.
Say again, Terry.
When are we meeting down there?
When are we meeting up at the nursing home? Um Davis, what, in in November, right?
Yeah, our next. Oh, just in general, um next week, actually, next week.
Yeah.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, Wednesday is the QAIC and medical. And now we start at nine thirty and then we have Commissioner Bud Haring at ten thirty. So, very short.
Yeah.
Mine starts for you then.
Yeah, 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 you're. So. So we can, we could actually, people could go down and see that.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt. I'd like to kind of see it. Um. I still have some. Concerns about the size of the building, but. We'll see.
It's actually with the, that that the little side when they have and all that, it's it's actually looking good, so. You know, all it it like, you know, it's interesting is um when I went up for the garden. Yearly celebration, you went to it. She uh the the Antioch. Uh individual pulled me aside and said, you know, with work that you guys are gonna be doing next year. If it rains, in the past, we'd be held this celebration at the West Mountain Town Hall. We'll be able to put it, we'll be able to have it right in there. I'm like, we'll be a little bit tight, but yeah, it would. She said, that's fine, we can. It will, and and so there, everybody's excited by it. I think it's one of those situations, like when we renovated uh delegation hall. The first six months. We had maybe two activities go on in there. Now we have in a year's time, close to a hundred and some odd events that go on in County Hall during the year. And it began, it is good. It's it's good. It's it's, you know, the citizens hall and they should be able to use it. I had, you know, and I'll never forget. That um. The we, the Democrats came to me and they were upset because we're renting the, not renting, not rented, we're letting the Republicans be. In the hall, and I said, and. The person, the chair at the time came to me and said, and she's like, you know, what are you doing? What are you, and it's like. Excuse me? I said, anybody can use the hall. As long as they meet the standards that we have. They sign the damage weight and and move forward.
Do not spill coffee on the carpet.
Yes. But but it's all cleaned up next, it's looking good. Um but. But in, I said, stop whining. If you want the hall. Rent the hall, you know, for the, hold on, you know, side up, side up to the hall. And you can go. And you can go and use it just like the Republicans use it, you know? And I said, well, how many times did I mean, I said, well, like multiple groups that use it. You know, and
That that's probably just a changing of the guards because literally for decades, uh, we've always uh uh allowed a kind of a bipartisan ac- access just for that reason. It's it's not a it's a public building, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, but it's just, yeah, and once they knew, now everybody's fine. Nobody cares. You know, it's just, you know, like, we've got people up there that quilt. We've got people that, you know, we've had plays up there. We've had choir sing, we've had um um what's Roxbury um? The hill.
Apple Hill?
Apple Hill, thank you. We've got Apple Hill up there. I mean, it's like, yeah. You've been working with me. But I want all my team. So that's where we're at. Griffin's working on the red barn. It's coming along, um, I think, right? I think it will be one of those things that when people find out that they can utilize it, um, you know, then we'll start moving forward on on that. And I think it's just going to grow with time. And I think it's going to be an asset to all that use it. They have started, uh, you know, I've been working with um the people that rent the farm for the sheep, the rights. Yeah, because the backside of the barn was pretty messy. They have started. There's still work that needs to be done. And so um I'll be meeting with them again to have them continue to just they just let, it's just let stuff pile up. And now they gotta get rid of everything they let pile up and and let the trees in, they need it, trees that, because they let everything, you know, grow um pile up.
These are the tenants who did that.
Yeah, so they're they're having to take care of it all. That's right. That's the reason I I got on about it. So, um, and there has, just so you guys know, Stuart has pulled his cows back, but he is using the barns uh still for um storage of his vehicles at this point for the winter. And I don't have any issue with it. Uh, that's he paying us the money, it pays the taxes and then some, and so it's all good. You'll be, uh Suzanne, uh the Kim and Cheryl worked extensively on the employee handbook. Um, and it was completed, um, and uh, we asked Suzanne, who had the electronic capabilities to put everything in order the way it is, to do that. Once that's done, you guys will get that. You'll have a few weeks to look through it. Then we can discuss it to see if there's any issues that you see within that. And then we'll have you vote on it, sign off on it, and we'll move forward.
And just, just just on that, I know, I know Suzanne had advanced her policies with regard to grants and I uh it's worth probably just making sure we all understand that all all those policies are good. They're not necessarily all, I'll say, um appropriate to 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 line up our policies with her policies because we have different finance uh processes and some of our uh some of our policies can't really be made to look like some of the grant policies, at least that's my recollection. So some, so I know Suzanne has put a lot of work into uh drafting policies that she needs in order to comply with a lot of federal regulations, but and I and I believe she has an interest that she'd like all of ours to resemble all of hers. Um, but I I know that um structurally, that's just, at some level, it's not possible. So we'll 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 have to rely on staff to kind of navigate what we can incorporate and what what kind of has to remain separate, but
Jack?
Yep.
Um, I had that, I've had that conversation with with Suzanne multiple times, but recently, like last week, and I outlined it very clearly that what she has brought forward to be adopted by the commissioners is for the grants department. And it's for grants that are coming through into Cheshire County. And 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 I, and you know, and how we need to then handle those 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 things uh moving forward. That is what, that if you, if and when you adopt those policies, that's what it will be for the grants department. If, and only if there there are any policies that we think are crossovers that make sense at some point down the road, we would take a look at that. And and we may change some of those things, but we may not. And it would be that we do a policy at a time where it's where it makes sense. And prior to that, it would be whoever that policy affects, whether it's finance or some other department, we would make sure that they would have those conversations, that if language should could be tweaked or something like that. Otherwise, what you're approving is, you are correct, is only for um, only for the grants departments to move forward.
Okay, that that's, I just want to be sure everybody understands that.
Yeah, I do want to, I I I guess, point out that, I mean, don't let that overshadow the fact that I think she does want you to at least approve it for her grants. Um, and so, I mean, at some point, that's going to need to happen so that, I guess, the overall thing is done. We did incorporate um some things into the employee handbook um that Suzanne had presented. And they stayed so that they um cover the things that are necessary for um, you know, like Ameri- eighty um ADA and whatnot. And so there's quite a few things that now you'll see in the employee handbook that were appropriate to stay there and to be there. And um, you know, there are certain things that I have I I adhere to that particular department's crossover into a grant. And so that I make sure to follow her policies and procedures. But as Jack mentioned, there are just certain things that just, you know, gap, I mean, they don't they don't we can't just conform to what the federal government wants us to do on grants with certain things that we have to do for our own financials. Um, so, um, we it just, there's always going to be certain things that are going to have to be different.
My things just go away. Alright, um. Well, interesting, um. We had a meeting with Southwest Fire Mutual this week and did the passover um with them. Um, or I should say last, or late last week. Uh, did the passover with them so that they are fully understanding that the expectation is that we search for the money, they put the grant all together. Does that mean we walk away? No, they, we've given them all kinds of help around policy or experiment process. We've given them guidance, uh, and well, um, Don Bliss and and Peter Denis are going to be working with them through the whole project. And so it's um yeah, it's it's you know, it's, they they clearly understand, they have designated an individual to to lead that. They also have a um uh admin position that they're going to turn into um a project manager type position for this and utilize that. So um, that's good. Um, and um, on that same note, Chase Hagman, who was, and I've talked about him before, he is the, was the deputy director of Dover. Um, I reached, uh, now he works for B E A and Bureau of what?
Economic.
Economic Administration, yeah. Uh, it fits, or something, something, I don't know, B E A, alright, don't. But uh, so he's over there now, he's he he's over there now. And um, I had reached out to him and and so he, what he's, he he said to me is, because in the conversation about eight months ago, he said, you know, keep me informed if, because if my people know of any money that's out there, we'll tell you and we'll guide you on how how to go. So I got a call from him out of the blue and so we had a good conversation, probably about forty-five minutes. And um, and so they, they're going to, we're sending him some, them more documentation, but they may have some leads on some money uh for us too. And so that's a good thing. And he did say, he did say that my thought of the one hundred and forty-four million that came into the states the last mile funding on the internet, that there's going to be money left over. And he did say that it makes all the sense in the world that we should be reminding people that our pro- our program is out there and that we should pursue it. And um so he was a great, he's been a great help. He's the one um that helped us get about, uh, and as an added employees, three million and then about a million dollars for a lot of them for some other projects that we get. Because we we just, we explained it to him. He said, send me paperwork, explain the project. And then boom, and 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 there it is. So he's been a really a great asset and doesn't joke well. Uh, and so, uh, so we may have some more money to to pursue. We still have the phone call next week with CD F A. Um, Community Development Finance Authority.
Do that.
Um, and um, to see, because they initially were not going to allow us to pursue a community development law thinking that we can. So we'll see, you know, that would be another four hundred thousand dollars. So um, we we're we're always trying to work the angles as best we can. But again, as a reminder, um, if, you know, we've taken out four point eight million and we're at two million and it's a three hundred to four hundred percent increase of the people that would have to be paying for this up up uh upgrade, that if we don't do it, E bacon will supply so much for the burger for this uh important, critical system, then we're um, we're, we cut that that increase to the to the users down significantly some. Um, and we're going to continue to try to cut it down as best we can. So that's, well, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to be uh sure that uh Don or somebody, I I want to keep a pulse on this whole project, because I'm I'm uh, to me, they're going to have to earn um, the confidence that they that they can actually administer this uh project. So I'm I'm not without my concerns. Obviously, we go through this all the time and I'm much more comfortable.
Yeah.
And so I know that they don't go through this very often, so I just want to be um, I want to be sure that we've got some guardrails to make sure it's going well.
They've po- they have hired them. So Don is in con- weekly contact or over here to deal with them. One and two is what I said, what I asked that we do is that we on a monthly basis come together and talk where things are at. And that I, you know, because I said, I want to continue to see that, you know, that this that we move forward with this project, you've already got uh two million dollars in the bank. You know, so let's not, you know, time is of the essence, let's get it done.
Check with uh Don at some point and uh and um see if they're going to be expecting or receiving uh uh status reports from the project manager. Um, I would think they would. And so, but anyway, you you get it. We we, I want to keep a close eye on it.
Yeah. Um, and um the only other thing I have is that uh we are heading towards our ten podcast. And it's interesting because this week, um, I had a city councillor uh from the city of King that I don't normally talk to, I don't see them a lot. And they said, you know, that it was, it's brilliant, their word was brilliant, that you guys are doing this podcast, really telling the story. And I'm like, oh, thank you. Um, and so it's, people must be looking at them, so that's good. And um, I did have Terry on the radio this weekend talking about Cheshire Power and keep that in mind too, so. Oh, yeah?
Of energy. And uh, one degree thickened. Got into Cheshire.
I couldn't.
Yeah. You know, that just brings to mind.
Did that happen? We need to tell that story because that's
I was thinking, you know, on on another level, this probably should be thought up. We need to prepare some resources that other organizations can use. Um, you know.
For marketing.
For marketing, you know, when people come into towns or counties and looking for information.
Well, I mean, for Swansea's economic group, they, we should actually go there and just say, here's, you know, here's this, because, yeah, Swansea did sign on and yes, they have this thing, but companies within that, but even in residents within that, those areas can still join us.
See, see, and see if we can put together. Keep it, keep it simple, but um, informative. In in the digital universe.
Yeah. So uh, the only other thing I have is that um, there is a movement amongst county administrators. Um, a group of them that have um, that rent their their us to the state of New Hampshire, they're not happy. They're they're um, they're trying to negotiate contracts with the state, and the state's saying, this is what we're going to pay for a square foot, blah, blah, blah. And I am not joining that group of individuals because we have a contract with the state of New Hampshire. In twenty twenty-seven, I'll be, I'm actually, I'm I've already asked for a meeting now, but we have a built-in in our contract to five-year renewals. So our first five-year renewal would be in twenty twenty-eight. Which, and we start.
January.
Uh, um, yes. And so, um, I want to start those conversations so that they know we, I don't want to change the contract. What we have for contract
It's working.
Is working. It's got, and it's uh three percent escalators built into it. And by twenty thirty-six, the revenue that it's going to be generating and there is going to be significant. It's not that it's not net. We're we're actually, Cheryl can, can tell you what, you know, what level of what we're, we are paying for our costs and then the rest of the money can be either set aside to go into a capital reserve so that if we have to do repairs like, you know, carpets or roofing or whatever, we can do that, or it goes back to taxes, back to the fund balance. So, um, and that's only going to continue to grow. Um, and so, um, I I've asked Kate Morgan to set up a meeting because this group has set up a meeting with individuals at the state and they're, they're, they're very aggressive. And I want to have a meeting for that meeting. They say that, you know, we're just wanted to talk about the future, we we have the automatic five-year, uh, well, not the automatic, the five-year review uh renewal that you can use. I don't want to change the contract. I want to just be able to move forward with the with the process because I I've looked through it. I, when we signed it, we had legal look at it too, and they had made some changes. The state agreed to the changes and everything's working. So in my world, I just don't see why we would change anything. And since then, we actually, we went to biomass. We got rid of oil, we did this, we did that, you know, there was, so that's what we're looking at. So, um, and I think that's it, that's all I have.
Um, how much do you think may be available to might be, what would be enough, be going to the community organizations who we supported two or three years ago?
That the armpits that the governor had left over, pretty much spent. So they initially said it was five million, and it grew to fifteen million, and I think it was close to thirty-five, forty, a million.
It was just an argument.
Oh, was there?
Meaning we were about thirty-nine million.
Yeah, thirty-nine, yes.
And it would have probably been two, but it was first.
Right, and and we, and we were part of, we're we're part of that, so, um. Now, we got, we got what we did, what we did, and that's so. Is there any uh old business? A new business?
Just an observation here for the restorative justice. Apparently, there are one hundred and eighty-six participants, which is way up from the last year. And for the DOC, there are up to one hundred and nine in the facility, and forty-four. Are federal inmates.
And remember, we budget for thirty-seven. So anything up and up beyond that is revenue that is, uh, a good.
Well done.
Yeah, I mean, he's been doing a lot of work out of high school and now. The King Middle School because of the flooding situation, the young girl took her life. Um, so.
He's also been going to the job fairs and working with employers that are willing to take restorative justice clients into the workforce.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. So, that's where it's a superstar.
And he is.
Yeah, good man.
When, when, when is he due for his periodic update?
Next week?
Yeah.
Oh, great, good.
I don't know why, but I did. Um, and and just have, just a reminder, Friday, Cheryl.
I'm here.
Cheryl, Friday, nine, is it nine o'clock?
Uh, let me check, it is, we start at nine o'clock, yes, budget review is nine to one.
Then budget review, nine to one on Friday. Next week is, is, is counting off. Next, next, and then Wednesday is up at the nursing home. And then, if I'm right, Friday is back at counting off.
And that's all, um, outside agencies on that Friday.
Yeah.
On the first Friday or the second Friday?
First Friday.
This, this, this coming Friday, we are. Counting off.
Yes.
Wednesday, uh, at the nursing home, and then that following Friday. We're there.
Okay, what is the topic for this Friday, the day after tomorrow?
Which department?
Outside agency.
No, no, it's, it's. I I traded with somebody, so you're.
Okay, I'm sorry, so the, on Friday, it's DOC, Sheriff's Department, Conservation District, UNH Co-op. System of Care in Connected Families Grants, Drug Court, County Attorney. Restorative Justice and EMS. And there, I mean, each department, I mean, is then given, I mean, fifteen minutes, obviously, you'll end up directing the. Time if it goes over or goes shorter, but, um, I mean, I don't wanna. Tell you what to talk about, but I would try to stick to the budget and not talk as much about program, um. Because, I. I I don't know, that's. Probably better to. Day for commissioners meetings, um, unless there's something really pressing that you wanna know about the program.
I I'll be good for all those meetings, I do have a hard stop at about noon, uh, this Friday, but otherwise I'll be good.
Okay, so you're gonna miss EMS. And restorative justice, those are the two you're gonna miss.
Got it.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think, yeah, I think sure, right, it is, and Jack's, it's Jack's budget hearing. And the only other thing is you're gonna hear requests, and they may sound good in theory. But it is a little bit of a poker game, so because at the end of the day. We may be saying something different than what they're saying, because we gotta keep it within the guidelines and where we can, we can do, so. All I can say is, ask, ask, ask good questions, but, um. Please don't say, yeah, I think that's great, I can support that, because. And they're gonna be upset if we have to go to the.
Yeah, that, yeah, we've got a long way to go before we get to approving or or not approving expenditures, so this is our drive-by to see where. What the requests are, and then we'll figure out if what we can do, we can't do.
Yeah. Um, and just, I guess, I I'm not sure if everybody's had a chance to pick up their books, I know Terry has, um. But, um, they are here in the conference from next to Chris's office.
Got it.
And, um, you know, we are starting at a point that this department request is up, is probably the highest that it ever has been. Um, it, taxes to be raised are just shy of nine point five million dollars of an increase over twenty twenty-four. So obviously, we know that that's not where it lands, but there is gonna be a lot of work to be done, so. That's where we are at.
That's, the the highest it's ever been for me was twenty-two percent. Increase, and we got it down to a one point three four, so. It 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 just takes a lot of, of creative thinking of how we're gonna get to where we need to get.
Yeah, and you know, there's certain areas of this budget that, you know, um, that. Uh, uh, other revenue sources such as fund balance that we know gets adjusted along the way. The only fund balance that's currently been, um, applied in this, um, is what was offset from pro-share funds. So as I start reviewing, you know, before the commissioner, um, finalized their budget. Fund balance, I'm certain, will be increased, so that will bring that down, and, um, so. But.
I think it's gonna, yeah, yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's gonna be an interesting conversation about, because I've been saying it for years. That at some point, you have, you have to own it a little bit too, you gotta, you know. We're gonna give you a document that shows where we are compared to other counties and how we spend over the last. You know, this is twenty nineteen, and you'll see that we're, we are the lowest county in when it comes to taxes. Be raised increases, percentage increases, um, great, great, but. With that is, I don't want to all of a sudden see spikes, because we're trying to always keep it here. We're trying to do justice for the individuals, and one of the things I've said to Representative Hunt in the past too is that. If, at one, at one point, we were looking at, um, doing some, then they said, well, why don't we just. Not use that money, but bond for it, or 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 pay it now, or. I'm like, you, if you do this, it creates a spike, but I have to fill next year, and the year after, the year after, I did this, and so. It's, it's, we're just gonna have to have those, those conversations, do we own it a little bit more this year than we have in the past? And to balance out the future. That's, those are the tough conversations we're gonna have to have. But, you know. It's, it's, it is gonna be interesting, so. And I've already started reading through it. You can do this now, that. So, all right. Um, keep on moving. Is it ten o'clock yet? Man, rushing it. Consent agenda, vote to accept, and we can manifest the minutes of October sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Um, see you in a second. Okay, Commissioner Wasbuck.
Hi.
Commissioner England. And Commissioner Clark. Uh, calendar, anything, uh, Davis, on the calendar that we have to accept of what we are just talking about, the budget here.
Nope, and then just next Wednesday, starting late, nine thirty.
Okay. All right, there is no non-public sessions, um, maybe one would be highlighted if we're looking at that. And so, um, without anything else on the agenda, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll just, uh, uh, thank Claudia again for attending, appreciate, uh, her diligence.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Wasbuck.
Hi.
Commissioner England.
Hi.
Commissioner Clark.